Good afternoon to L Sac members and welcome to all viewing the meeting remotely. Before we begin, I have a few notes to announce before conducting virtual meetings. The meeting must still comply with requirements of the Open Meetings Act. The public may view the meeting via link provided in the advertised agenda, which can be found online at the KDE website. L Sac members must ensure their video is streaming and they can be seen throughout the duration of the meeting. L Sac members may mute their microphone when not talking, however, all discussions must be broadcast to the public. Therefore, superintendents should ensure their microphone is not on mute when speaking. For any items that require a vote, a roll call vote will be necessary to record the vote of each superintendent. Please mute or turn off cell phones or other mobile devices as to not interrupt the meeting. We have our very first item is an item for review and action and some information there. Senate Bill 158 from 2020 stipulated that the Kentucky School Accountability System be extensively revised. A systematic process for setting the accountability performance standards was conducted last week involving a representative group of Kentuckians. Senate Bill 158, 2020 also specified that the final performance standards or cut scores be approved by both L Sac and KDE. In today's meeting, background information will be provided, including all about the requirements of Senate Bill 158, required accountability measures, weights established for each indicator, the process used by the standard setting committee to inform the recommendations, and notes about the results of the standard setting process. Any questions L Sac members have regarding the process and recommended performance standards will be addressed. In addition, L Sac will be supported in a guided process to reach a decision on whether to approve the recommended accountability performance standards. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Rhonda Sims and Brian Gong. They're going to be given a review of approval accountability cut scores as recommended by the standard setting committee.
Thank you Chair Fletcher. Great to see everyone today. We appreciate again time to be with you today and have this important discussion that would lead to our first reporting of accountability results since 2019. Before we get started though, on a few little review slides, I would like to invite Commissioner Glass if he would like to say anything to the group before we get started. I thought you might want to at least say hello.
Thank you Rhonda and good afternoon everyone. Thank you Mr. Chair. As Chair Fletcher mentioned, Senate Bill 158 really set forth a new accountability system for the state and it's one that we've been delayed in implementing because of the disruptions in assessments related to COVID-19. The new system is going to feature a color coded rating system for schools and the use of both educational attainment and change in future calculations and ratings. Senate Bill 158 also established a joint decision making authority with the Department of Education and the L Sac together establishing the cut points for this new accountability system, stating that both KDE and the L Sac shall approve those cut points. And the approach does create a governance problem as the law doesn't contemplate what should happen in the event that KDE and L Sac don't agree on those cut points. Well, in order to avoid that outcome, we brought to you and the staff at the department worked with L Sac members to establish the broad and inclusive process that we went through last week to establish those standards and cut points in the new assessment data. Two L Sac members were represented among the broad group of Kentuckians who took part, as well as were other non-L Sac superintendents, state board members, students, teachers, education advocates and other Kentuckians. And the recommendations that you have before you are the result of that two day endeavor where the committee wrestled with, debated, and ultimately came to consensus on standard setting cut points for Kentucky. I want to publicly acknowledge and thank the Kentuckians who gave of their time and input as part of that process and on behalf of the Kentucky Department of Education, we're deeply respectful of you and the outcomes that you determine. As the L Sac now considers and works to approve these standard setting cut points, I wonder underscore that KDE briefed you and received input from you on this process, involved L Sac members in the committee. And now, and that now I rely heavily on the determinations of that standard setting committee to establish the new cut points for the state accountability system. Today, members of L Sac, you'll be asked to approve those cut points and the recommendations that will come before you from KDE and the recommendation that is before you from KDE is to approve those cut points in alignment with what the standard committee, standard setting committee has put forth. If L Sac ends up doing that, then KDE at my direction will concur and we move forward with implementing the accountability system as it was envisioned in Senate Bill 158. Conversely, if L Sac rejects or modifies the recommendations put forth by the committee, then we will trigger the governance problem that on this decision that is built into Senate Bill 158. And it is then possible that KDE, under my direction, and L Sac are effectively approving different cut points. If that's the outcome, then KDE will need to consider options on how best to move forward, but know that that process is unclear. In any case, we must and will move forward publishing outcomes that are in alignment with federal requirements so that we don't jeopardize our federal access to funding. So with that overview, I want to turn things back over to Associate Commissioner Rhonda Sims to more formally introduce you to the standard setting process and walk you through the results that came forth from the standard setting committee. Back to you Rhonda.
Thank you Commissioner. I'm going to just spend just a few moments with you and it's really a redo of some things we talked about the last time we were together when we talked about the process. So Jenny, if you could bring up the slide deck and we'll start with Slide 3. As both Chair Fletcher and the Commissioner has referenced, Senate Bill 158 is what puts the system into place and that while it passed in 2020 and early in the legislative session that year, it has been until this point in time until we could get it into place because of all of the delays with COVID. And obviously, we are still living with that circumstance. Senate Bill 158 does have a few requirements I just want to remind you of. There is an exclusive list of indicators that are actually defined in the law and we'll look at those on the next slide in a moment. It says for each indicator, we need to evaluate it on status, what is the current year performance, and eventually on change, and it defines those terms. And then it requires that the indicators, the overall performance, status and change be in that colored dashboard. So much of the conversation today is about achieving that color and the associated label that goes with the color. So that is the process that folks were involved with in the last few days and so that's what we'll talk with you about of those cuts around the color. When components of assessment or system change or accountability system, that's when it's sometimes the standards you've had previously have to be changed and adjusted and you go through a formal process for that. Let's go to the next slide Jenny. So as we look at Slide 4, this is just a reminder of the statutory language. Dr. Glass has already highlighted the "and" that makes the governance a little different on this because it basically implies that there is a joint decision that both parties weigh in, KDE and L Sac. There is a goal that eventually the cut scores would remain in place for six years. I will remind you though, we don't have change in the system yet. So the panel met on the 13 and 14 to identify some cuts to help define those colors and what would be released with the data this year. As we move on to the next slide however, just to remind you what we're, when we look at status and change, this is a one-year process because change is not in the system. It'll have to come back to some sort of process again next year to set up something that is more long-term. So because it's only status this year in the current year, we will have to do some sort of process in '23. So what you're reviewing today is around the color and around the one year for reporting this fall. As we go to the next slide, just a reminder of the indicators, I won't read those to you. You will notice there are four indicators, the first four bullets, that are included in every level of the system, so elementary, middle and high. This is a level based system, so elementary schools are compared to other elementaries, middle to middle, high to high, rather than a K-12 type of comparison. So the first four across all of those levels. The post-secondary readiness is a high school only measure. This year, that is one indicator of readiness that leads to success for students. And the finally graduation rate, which is of course a high school circumstance. So for the 21-22 school year, the indicators, the overall ratings that are based on that current year performance only or status. So as we move to the, that's just a little bit of background. I'll pause there to see if anyone has a question and then we will get into actual the process and what was yielded from that process. Again, I know the background is quite familiar to all of you, but just wanted to bring, make sure we're all on the same page today with background. Okay? Right, I paused there for my short teacher wait count. So let's move forward to talk a bit about this overview of the actual standard setting process again that occurred last week on the 13th and 14th. And I'm going to turn to our colleagues with the Center for Assessment that do this kind of work across the country and as well as other psychometric supports for states. Brian Gong, Chris Domaleski and Laura Pinsonu were both with us. All three were with us here in Kentucky last week and I'm going to just open this up to Dr. Gong and I think he will have decided, I'm sure the three of them, how they want to proceed with the slides. So Brian or Chris or Laura, if you'll just indicate when you want the slide to move forward. Jenny is manning that and she'll move it forward for you.
Thank you Rhonda and we appreciate this opportunity to give a short summary about the accountability standard setting process to the L Sac. The Center for Assessment has contracts with over 30 states and several districts in supporting their work in assessment and accountability. But every state in the US has an accountability system and they all set standards, standards, performance standards for them. Kentucky, if we could go to the next slide Jenny please. Kentucky is a leader because of the process that it uses in setting accountability performance standards. Kentucky uses an open process. It involves a broad group of stakeholders. It follows a structured set of procedures for doing that. It consults both professional judgment and also data. And we don't have the exact count, but most states don't have as open a process as Kentucky does. And we'll talk about what the process and what we mean by it being, being open. You can see in this, in this summary of the process, there were several steps in setting performance standards, involved careful consideration and judgment by the panelists and also both individually and then with discussion as a group and then there's a group evaluation which I'll mention a little bit later. If we could go to the next slide, the show, there were 27 people who were nominated at the last minute. One person was not able to participate, so there are 26 people who participated. I think you may be familiar with many of the people. You can see from their affiliations, it's a broad representative group of Kentuckians and have a wide range of educational experience with the educational system. If we could go to the next slide please. There were two main parts in the process. One was describing performance and then once, once there's a definition of performance, then there was a process for recommending what are called cut scores or what is good enough. So someone says, what do you mean by a green level? If you know it, if you can define it, then someone says, when I look at schools, examples of schools, then these are green and these are not. And that was essentially, the process was a little more involved in that, but that's essentially the type of, the type of judgment. And that was done for indicators, each of the indicators, and it was also done for overall school performance, elementary, middle and high as Rhonda said. Could we go to the next slide please? The descriptions of performance quality are called performance level descriptors and part of the structured exercise was to have people review those and to give suggestions about what it is that they thought was the most important and if, and to make any suggestions for adjustments or tweaks for them, both at the indicator level and the school level. One of the important parts that came up was that people said that these descriptions of performance quality should involve both normative or comparative language such as performance in relation to a state score, state average, and also language more descriptive of performance relative to standards or expectations such as percent of students proficient or a graduation rate. So not just how schools compared, but what does, what would it really, what would a good graduation rate really be? Go to the next slide please. The panelists were asked to determine what was the score that would distinguish a, each level. So for example, what would distinguish a very low in reading and math, elementary, from the next level, which is low, and so on for each of the, for the cut scores. People did that individually. Feedback was given back to the groups. People discussed that and then they rated again and then there was another discussion. One of the things that was important was that even though the group may have indicated in their scores, this is what they recommended, when the group came, as a whole came back, if a super majority, if two-thirds felt that they wanted to make a change, so someone would propose, I think that the cut should not be where it ended up after the second group rating, but I propose that it be changed to something specific. Then there was this discussion, if two-thirds of the panelists agreed with that, then the cut point was changed. And that actually happened several times. You can see here, it was 11 indicator cut scores were changed through that group moderation and discussion. So people had a, had several opportunities to say, I don't think that that's the appropriate one, then have a group input for changing them. And just as a note, there was a general proposal of, so the indicator, several indicator cut scores were changed. There was a discussion about changing some of the overall school performance ratings, but that I did not go forward to remote. Next, next slide please. So the recommended cut scores come in set, a set of cut scores for the indicators. And again, there are six indicators. There are five levels for each of, each of them and there's elementary, middle and high. And then there are going to be overall school, school rating cut scores, elementary, middle and high, again, five levels for those. If, oh, the last bullet on this I thought was important. The group did an evaluation. One of the questions was, how, how much do you agree that the indicator and, so there's a question by indicator, a question about overall school cut score recommendations, how much do you agree that they are appropriate and reasonable? And over 90% of the respondents agreed or strongly agreed that the recommendations were appropriate and reasonable. Let's go on to the actual cut scores. This table summarizes the recommended indicator cut scores and underneath them are the percentiles. The Senate Bill 158 says that the cut scores need to also be related to a percentile. So the percentile says in 2022, what, what was the percentile school that got that score that's above it? There's another table that's smaller than this because it doesn't have as many data points that also summarizes the recommended cut scores and percentiles for the overall school ratings, elementary, middle and high for the, for the four cuts for the five categories. Because you receive the, the slide deck ahead of time, I don't intend to walk through every slide. If we can go to the next one, the next slide, I'll just, so there's the, the actual cut, the cut scores for the, the indicators in elementary school. Go to the next slide please. And one of the things that was important to look at just as a check is to say, do people think that the cut scores are reasonable? And one way to, to check that is to, to look at what was called the impact. What are the percentage of schools that would receive those ratings if, if those were applied today? And so the first one, just I'll, I'll describe it just so everyone has the same understanding of it. This is the indicator of reading and math. It, it is what, it's based on the proportions of students in the school, elementary school, who scored novice, apprentice, proficient or distinguished and there, those have different points for them. And then they're combined and so the maximum score would be 125, the minimum score would be zero, a score of 100 would mean that all students on average would are, would be scoring proficient. The score of 50 would be that all students on average are scoring apprentice and a score of 75 would be that half the students on average are scoring apprentice and half are scoring proficient. So if you look at the recommended cut scores, 54 is the cut score between low and medium for, for reading and math. That's close to saying, close to 50. So a school that has just a little more than half, than all the students on average scoring basic would be medium school. And then the colored bars, the histogram on the right indicate the percentage of elementary schools that would receive a red or a very low, orange, which would be a low, yellow, medium, green, high or blue, very high. And that's true for the, the other indicators. I just wanted to bring, have one other thing to call to your attention. Jenny, if we could jump to the elementary school cut recommendation, the slide 26 please. So these are the other indicators. Middle school goes through the indicators as well and high school. So, oh just, sorry, if you go back, just back one slide Jenny please. The overall performance also has cut scores recommended with percentiles and that's what this table summarizes for elementary, middle and high. And then the materials after it are very similar to what we just went through for the indicators. It gives the cut scores and the percentages of schools in each category. So the, the things that are being presented for L Sac to review and approve actually are summarized in this table and the slide on, at the table on Slide 14. Everything else is background information. So if there were a motion to, to approve, it would be the cut scores that are summarized actually in two of the, two of the slides, this one and Slide 14. I'd be happy to respond to any questions otherwise.
I have a question Brian. If you look at this cut score recommended and I'm looking at the percentile between red and orange, I do not remember any of those being as high as 7.2 and 6.1. Could you explain the discrepancy in that?
Sure.
The power or the slides we were given?
Yes. So the, the law says that the cut score needs to also be expressed as a percentile. So the, the cut score is what is the score that is the minimum score for the category above? So 35 is the minimum score to be in orange. So the percentile is, the 5.3 is the percentile for 35 and so it includes the, some orange schools. So if you go down to 34, that will correspond to the red schools that you see in the, in the, in the graphs. It's the, because the percentile says at or, at or below, it actually includes the first score of the category above. That's why, so it looks like a discrepancy, but actually is, is not a discrepancy.
Okay, I'm, okay, I don't, I guess my question is, could we have not gone with decimals of 36 point whatever as opposed to 37? Cause again, this, the, the charts that we were given was that we would have no more than 5% or round about 5% that would be labeled red. So with that, we would have 7.2% of our middle schools labeled and 6.1% of our high schools labeled.
So the, just to see if I can explain it, so 7.2 is the number of schools that score 37 or lower, but the cut score, the red, 37 is actually an orange school. So that 7.2 includes some orange. So if you look at the slide, Slide 27, it actually shows that there are, if you go to 30, so if 35 includes orange schools, if you go to 34 and lower, this is elementary, then it's 4%. If you go to, if you go to the next slide, which is the middle school we're talking about, if you go to 36, which would be red, then it's 5.4. I think 5.4 is what the committee talked about.
So if you go back to that slide one more time please. So we're saying that 35 is an orange score.
That's right, because when, when, when the committee was judging it, they said, what is the score where it turns from red to orange? And 35 was where it turned orange.
Then we're saying with the middle schools, 37 is where it's turned to orange. So a 36 would be, 36 or less would be what? What percentage would that be? Or 36?
So in, in middle school, 36 would be red and you can tell on the slide 27, Jenny, if you can go to that, you can see that 5.4% of the schools are red. So 30, the score of 36 or lower is red and 5.4% is that. So, and I think what you're pointing out is that there's, there can be 1% or more schools right at that, that cut point and so they're in the higher category.
Okay, so we're saying that if you're 37, you're in the higher category, but only 5.4% are in the red, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
I feel better about that. Thank you Brian.
Okay.
Other questions from L Sac members? Comments? I'll make a comment as a member of the committee. It was, it was a good two days. There was a lot of great discussions. Probably one of our biggest points was the fact that, you know, we wanted to stay close to that 5% for student, for schools to be in the red. That decision was made. And you know, after round one, we had some, it's anywhere from seven to nine, maybe even 11, as high as 11% of schools being labeled red. But we felt like we wanted to keep that at the CSI level of around 5%, which I appreciate the, the committee doing that. A lot of the issues that, you know, I think when talking with fellow superintendents that we have is when we come into the, those two slides of 26 and 27 of the discrepancy between the percentage of schools that are in the orange and red versus the green and blue. And some of the changes that were talked about, and it was actually brought up, it wasn't voted on as you pointed out, was due to the correlation between, so if you made the change of allowing change of allowing more yellow schools to be labeled as green, that would loosen or have a weaker correlation than if you leave it as such. Now, with the data that we have here, I don't, I don't have any way of telling you that every single school that scored four yellows are still yellow without seeing every single school's data. But I will say this, I can, I can say with, with some sincerity, that if we moved the percentage of yellow to green, then you're going to see a weaker correlation between this and the indicators. So my point there in saying this is, you know, LSEC has the opportunity to approve or not approve this. And then, so I guess the question would be, do we believe as a group that these percentile ranks, or we should be looking more at how we relate with other staff, other schools? Or should we look at how it's based on indicators? And I think that's a great, great conversation to have. I do have a question for Dr. Glass. Dr. Glass, if LSEC were to not approve these, what goes on the dashboard?
Well, it's not, sure, it's not clear. The statute says that the LSEC approves a set of cut points and that KDE approves a set of cut points. And the statute doesn't specify what happens if we can't agree or we approve different cut points. So if LSEC decides to approve something different than what the committee has recommended, then we will have to evaluate a number of different options. And so those would include KDE moving and accepting what LSEC has recommended, so we concede to whatever y'all decide. Alternatively, I could substitute a different set of cut points unilaterally from KDE. I could have the department negotiate with the LSEC to see if we can agree on something. Or we can move forward unilaterally, publishing the department's cut points. At this point, I don't know which one of those is the right path. I really wanted to hear this discussion and see what the determination of the LSEC would be.
Sure.
So, so I, it's, the law isn't very clear on how we resolve the governance problem around this decision. And just one more point, Chair Fletcher. Regardless of what we decide to do with the state accountability system, as I mentioned before, we have to move forward with the federal accountability. And so that's to ensure that our access to federal funds continues.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for clarifying that.
Chairman, this is Sheila Mitchell from Princeton.
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Superintendent Mitchell?
Apologize. And Commissioner Glass and Rhonda Sims, if I'm speaking out of turn, please tell me, because I can stop, I can proceed with my comments at another time if they're not appropriate at this point. But I was gonna just piggyback off of what Superintendent Fletcher said, just around the process. I just want to say thank you for allowing us to be a part of that, but also that the process was very, very good. Enjoyed working with a lot of variety of stakeholders to help us work through this process. My concern is not so much around, well, it is around the end result, but it's also around day one and how the indicators were determined. I felt really good about the changes that were made, the 11 indicator changes that were made, because there was a lot of really strong, good, rich discussion from all committee members. And we did make some really good, what I feel were decisions around the red category. Where I feel there's a concern is I'm not confident, after I went home and thought about it and thought about it since, is that the indicator work, I felt potentially may have been cut short, which in turn allowed day two work to be more difficult. So I'm not sure if now's the appropriate time to have that discussion, or if we can discuss that at the end. But Chairman Fletcher, that's, I wanted to just bring that up, because I think it's relevant right now, as we're discussing these cut points and how they relate to the indicators.
Others from LSEC members, any questions or comments from any of those, any of our I think that any changes that, I'm sorry, Superintendent Burchett?
Yeah, Dr. Fletcher, Chairman. For those of us that weren't, obviously weren't a part of that work, I'm still just, I guess, trying to understand what Superintendent Mitchell was speaking of and the setting of the indicator scores, establishing those. And I think it was mentioned in the presentation, 11 modifications or 11 adjustments to those. I mean, we don't, in this presentation of data, we don't know what those modifications or adjustments were, or we don't see that. And we don't know how that impacts, those modifications impacts the overall scores. When I, when I hear from, from people, when I look at this, you know, you look down through there at the very end, and you see the, the high school overall cut score or recommendation kind of looks like a bell curve, you know? So you got, we got the, we've established that federal requirement of the 5%, and then we've got, you know, the high, very high end, and we've got the median, and then it almost looks, it almost looks perfect. So, but then I hear from, you look at elementary and middle school, and it doesn't, it does, the distribution doesn't look that way. And so I guess that's based as a result of these indicator cut scores and how they all come together. And if the, if the modifications to those by the group, it sounds like some very rigorous discussion about those and very good discussion about those, but how those impacted the overall, we're not seeing that level of data here. So I guess I, maybe Rhonda, maybe you can explain a little bit more about that process or how that, how that works?
I'll mention, and then I'll invite Brian or a part of his team there at the center who facilitated the process for us. One thing, I think the 11 modifications, you know, the, the basic is everyone does something individually. You enter that into a round one, and then you share where the data comes out. In some cases, I think when we were looking at the overall, there was a, not as much variety of difference, there's not as many difference or variance in there as when we looked at the indicators. Then after the discussion, there's an opportunity to go in and do it again, to do a round two. Then after the round two is when you can ask, let's discuss a modification. Someone can put a proposal on the table. And so I think that most of the changes around the 11 was geared more to where that cut should be in identifying red and distinguishing it from orange. I think most of the 11 were around that. Now, I could be speaking incorrectly, that's just from memory and not looking at the number. So I'll invite Brian, Laura, Chris, someone from the center that would have the numbers in front of them. And then remember, if two-thirds of the committee votes on that, and it was actually a hand vote, people put their hands up, and they were counted. And if you achieve that two-thirds supermajority, then you could make the change to the end product. So it starts out with a round one, a round two, and then the ability to modify. And there was a lot of conversation around the indicator. I think a lot of the focus was more towards the distinction between the red and the orange in much of that conversation, but there could have been some other cuts as well. And, you know, part of the system is, a little bit about a coherence of it. I think the chairman mentioned earlier, if you have a school that has, you know, an elementary, and they have four of these indicators, and they're yellow in each of them, most likely they would be yellow in the overall. The more you separate the overall from that, the more likely you could have yellow on the indicators and then potentially be a green in the overall. So that's what we mean by that kind of coherent connection across the individual pieces and the overall score. But let me pause there and see if Brian, Laura, or Chris, I'm not sure who would prefer to talk about this, could talk a little bit about this question from Superintendent Burchett, and maybe lead over a little bit into the comment from Superintendent Mitchell as well.
Hi, College, this is Kristina Dolewski of the Center for Assessment. I can maybe provide a contribution.
Thanks, Chris.
Clarify or address the superintendent's question. As Ms. Sims described, the process after two rounds of rating, there were, the group was invited to take a vote. And the 11 changes on the vote, that again, required a two-thirds support in order to be, to carry support, were related to two issues. One was related to, there was a perspective shared in the conversations that the percentage of schools labeled red on academic indicators should be at or around 5% or below. And some of them were a little higher after the two rounds, and so there was a perspective shared that there should be, those thresholds should be nudged back a bit in order to reflect the kind of impact that some of the participants invited us to think about. There was one other change, and it related to, there was a substantial discussion about English language progress. And there's just a general feeling in the room that this is an area that we care greatly about and certainly wanted to see improved performance around the state. And I think the panel wanted to make sure that there is an appropriately high threshold to recognize the most distinguished performers that was meaningfully related to real progress being demonstrated in the school. So actually, a more ambitious target was set at the upper ranges, I think, for each of middle and high schools. So those are the two changes. There were an increase in the threshold for English language progress, and there was a decrease in the threshold for some of the academic indicators with a sense that that impact ought to be at or around 5%.
Thank, thank you. And just one other question, and I don't know, Rhonda, this might be for you or for somewhat, someone else. As I look at the overall indicator cut scores and 2022 percentiles, that big chart that's got all of them on there. And if you look at really the scales, or the range, I guess I would say, between, for like, for elementary, between elementary very low to low medium, that, that range in that group is a scale of 22 points. The high school or the middle school to, from low to low medium is 19, and the high school is 14. Conversely, to the next one, and this is in reading and math, and conversely to the next one, from low medium to medium, it's, for the elementary, it's 16, middle school it's 10, high school it's 12. And then medium, high to, high, very high, it's 11, eight, and 12. And I'm just curious if there was any discussion about those scales being greater for one group of, for elementary per se versus middle or high? Because it seems like that's, you know, we're not talking about one point, you're talking about, in this case, three, and then from middle to high, it's, it's five points, you know? So how those, how we, how you got to those scales for those cut scores?
Right. It might be helpful, Brian or Chris, Laura, if you wanted to talk a little bit, you know, we started describing performance using the performance descriptors for the indicators, and there's a set for schools. But we also looked at actual live data, not attributed to any school or district, but actual live performance and the patterns of performance or profile across the school. And it was from that that you made those first cuts as a round one, of when did you think the school left and moved to the other? And I, Chris uses a term that I think is very helpful. There's a theoretical range of scores, the idea of zero up to 125 is the most you can earn with reading and math and also with science, social studies, and writing, which combines those subjects together. But the effective range, what is the highest score, is not going to be up at 125. That's the theoretical score. So there was some discussion of that as well. But I think what you're asking gets more into the notion of the profile and how they looked at the real data coming out of 2022 testing for schools, again, not identified anyway to a school, but it was a set of data from the schools. And so I'll pause there and see if either Brian or Laura or Chris want to further kind of describe that, because I think that's really what Superintendent Burchett is asking about, and maybe ask one of you all to elaborate a little bit more.
I can give a quick response. I think the question is based on the observation that the distance between scores for the cut scores is not, not the same for elementary, middle, and high school, and then sometimes not the same for different indicators. And the question is, how did people come up with that? Was there a discussion or what were they considering? I think that in general, so people were aware of that and had discussions, but I think that there were two main things that people were looking at. One was that the actual performance between elementary and middle and high is somewhat different in the, the different areas. And an example is, even if you look at the reading and math, just that first row that's on the, the table, you can see that the low, medium cut scores are quite similar. Elementary is 54, middle school is 55, high school is 53. But the percentage of schools is somewhat different. You know, it looks like it's only one point different, but actually it's 39% of the elementary schools, almost 45% of the middle schools, and so on. So people were, were looking at both the score and what it meant, and also how, how schools perform, elementary, middle, and high school perform differently, and I think trying to balance those two things.
And I'd say, one other thing I'll add, just, this is a little bit more simple concept, but we've not dealt with this in many years. Remember, you earn increasing credit as students move from novice through apprentice to proficient, distinguished. So Brian used that example earlier, that on average, if all students were proficient, your score would be around 100 in terms of your, your calculated index score. You know, if you were at 50, it's most of your students are at apprentice, based on the credit you earn. And because we do have a little bit of extra value that comes in, like a fourth of a point, if students are at distinguished, that's where you can get the 125. But the actual performance, I think, is more reflected on that percentile line, and we do see variance in how the school levels have performed in this 2020 data.
This is Superintendent Mitchell again, and I just wanted to also kind of circle back around for Superintendent Burchett and my concern. Mr. Dolewski very clearly described how that part of the process to determine the indicators went with a heavy conversation around that 5% for the red and a very lengthy, heavy conversation around our English language learners. And that's where I felt as a participant that we kind of stopped the conversation. There was a lot of conversation around those two areas, and we were, we did vote, and there was a lot of agreement, and that's where the changes came in. My professional opinion is, is that we did not carry through for the remaining categories enough discussion to make additional changes, which is where my concern come in. And so I just wanted to share that just for clarification as we end this piece of the
One of the things that, any, any other comments from any other member? I have a couple more if I would like to make, unless anyone else would like to say something.
I do want to thank Ms. Sims and the other folks on here for providing that excellent explanation. Helps me, helps me to better understand the process and the system. Thank you.
Chair Fletcher, I have a question, and directed at Superintendent Mitchell, to see if this is, maybe gets it, one of the things she's asking. So when I, when I looked at the, the data, like you guys, you know, I looked at the high, overall, the high school, and having kind of that, that bell curve, but then when I looked at elementary, middle, things are kind of skewed toward the left, where it was, you know, very low and low. So, but I understand that the work that you guys did upfront with the indicators is, is kind of what, what, what drove that, that work there at the end. So Sheila, are you, are you saying that possibly if more work had been done in the beginning with the indicators, that maybe we would have come up with, you guys would have come up with more of a, of a, even distribution like, like the high school, or am I totally missing? missing what you're saying?
No, Superintendent Riley, you're, you're exactly right. That is, that is what I think where part of the work stopped. We ended a few minutes early, but everyone was very tired because the conversation was very rich. It was very, it was just very good conversation. Everyone was very passionate about their conversations around that 5%. But also I think Mr. Demolesky did a very accurate account of what took place around the English language learner conversation as well. And so there was a lot of really lengthy discussion around those two pieces. And I, I personally feel like that's where we stopped as a committee and did not have enough time to finish that conversation. As a participant, I felt like we would pick up that conversation the next day and then our work kind of changed into the, the cut score. So yes, you are correct. That's exactly what I'm saying as a participant.
Thank you.
Others? Okay, I spent some time, you know, we represent various superintendents across the state and I spent some time over the weekend and also I'd like to thank KDE first and foremost because they put a lot of work in on Friday to get this to us by the end of the day Friday. There was some, there was a couple typo errors. They did a great job getting those to us and, and it was just some minor issues that were changed there. So again, Dr. Glass, Commissioner Glass, your staff, I want to say we appreciate that tremendously. The, as far as talking with other superintendents, I think that as far as, when they look at this, we go back to slides 26, 27 and 28 a lot. And if you look at 26, it deals with, scroll down, I'm sorry, the next one, thank you. Well, there was some great discussion brought up by one of the superintendents about this in particular. You know, if you look at this, we're saying that based on our, what we did that day, 17.2% would be green and 8.6% would be blue. Conversely, you'd have 28.7 orange and four, let's see, it's kind of behind the, I can't see that, four, 4.0, whatever that number is, 4.0% would be red. And I think the philosophy, I hate to say philosophy, but there's two ways that people approach this and talking with some people in the room. One, should this be quote unquote evenly distributed? In other words, are we looking at more like normal data? Should there be the same percentage of green and blue as, or as orange and red versus do we say, okay, this should be a strong reflection of the indicators? We did look at one school that would have changed if there were some changes made in the yellow to green that could possibly have been four yellow to, and, and still been overall green. So if, if there's any changes as far as this to kind of even it out to make it look like a bell curve, the correlation between this and the indicators will weaken. On the other hand, if there's a change, you're going to be going along with the philosophy that we need to be able to show data that, how do we compare with each other? I will also say this, many of us in this room, we don't like comparison data, but really and truly, that's the only thing that in my opinion that we have this first time around because this is the first time for this, for this test. It's not normed with NAPD, it's not normed with MAP. It is how do we compare with each other versus the indicators? I think people make very, very good arguments when you look at, at this in particular as far as the indicators. There were 68 decisions made by the group, 68. And from what I can talk to with a lot of superintendents that I represent, I think they're pretty, I think superintendents are good with 66 of those decisions, which means they absolutely honor what this committee did. The tough part here is do we go with the, we need to be able to look at this as a more of a, I won't say straight normal distribution because we're not looking at one standard deviation above, one standard deviation below, two standard deviation, but we are looking at something that would give us more of a normal looking curve versus does this come back to the indicators? Now, there are some, been some great conversations about the indicators themselves. You know, when we were given the indicators from the center, this is what we were told to, to look at. You had to select if a, based on the indicator, let's say in reading and math, very high, the indicator rating is assigned for performance as among the best in the state. High, this indicator rating is assigned performance to state score not among the best, not among the best in the state, but above the state median. Medium is in the middle, near the state score. Low is, is among the lowest in the state and very low is among, I'm sorry, is not among the lowest, but some of the lowers in the state below the state mean, and then the very low is the lowest in the state. So what people did at that point with the indicators, they decided, looking at the data we had in front of us, where should these cut points be? What is the cut point? I'm thankful that we had 27 people, so it was, there was a wide range of opinions in there. And I really think that the, our, our group here from the Center for Assessment did a great job of showing even the, the charts. Some of those charts looked almost like there would be some very high ones, low ones and it was a jagged, it was a jagged representation of where our opinions were, where were the cut points? And then what you see as a result in the indicators is a smoothing of that. This is what the, what the, for the most part, the group would, would, would agree to. Personally, I think six, I can, I can, even though I didn't, you know, if you look at my individual votes when we turned them in, I've tried to look more at bell distributions, percentiles, whereas others looked at indicators. And I think that's very valid. So I think as far as for us, and if I just talk about from the superintendents I talked to, it's, it's about those two charts more than anything else. And I will say this, a change in those two charts absolutely makes no impact on growth because in years to come, growth is based solely on what does it look like in each indicator from one indicator to the next? So just from my, the people I represent, I believe they, we would feel better if we looked at how we related to each other versus looking specifically at indicators. And I've also told you what the downfall of that is also. And as, as Dr. Glass pointed out, and I think Ms. Sims also, this was brought up. This was brought up in the committee and it was dropped. It did not come to a vote. And the reason for that was is we looked at one particular school. What did it mean?
Chairman Fletcher, I'll also piggyback on what you said and agree that we did look at those indicators and we did look at one school in particular and to see what that impact would be and looked at increasing and/or decreasing those percentage points to see what that would do to the overall to get elementary and middle schools to look very similar or more similar to the high school. I think, again, we were near the end of our time with the group on day two when we had this discussion. So I'll go back to both, you know, days when very critical, important decisions were being made, in my opinion, for the overall indicators as well as the cut scores. We were near the end of our time, folks were tired and, you know, again, I feel like we could have held more discussion regarding that. We chose not to after looking at one school and we looked at four or five or even six schools to see where those cut, cut points fell, what that meant for those schools and, you know, could they be, could we agree that, you know, one or more of those schools could have switched color categories, you know, possibly? I don't know because we didn't do that. So I agree with Superintendent Fletcher on that point as well.
Dr. Fletcher, could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
When I talk about these indicators, am I correct in saying, are these cut points, these cut points are going to stay as is for the next five years? Is that correct? Or will we be coming back and revisiting these after next year's scores?
I'd like to turn that over to Ms. Sims, Rhonda, if you wouldn't mind to answer that.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, I had to have a crazy question, Rhonda, I'm sorry.
I know. It's great to see you, Mike. No, I, we have to go through the process again next year because change has to come in and part of it would be looking again at the status measures. So it's my understanding we would have a opportunity to revisit the cuts, both on the indicator as well as the overall on status. And then you have to bring all that together with change. Now I'll pause there and see if anyone either on my team or on the center team would like to clarify that in any way.
On the, Ms. Sims, on that question, and you alluded to it earlier and then again just now, do we know what that process next year to incorporate that change and readjust what that might look like? Do you all have an idea on what that might look like?
We would do something very similar to what we've done this year, but you'd have to look not only at the status, you would have to look at change coming in as well, the way the law has defined it. So it would be a longer process than we did this year. You know, as Superintendent Mitchell mentioned, you know, we had a day and slightly over a half. It'll need to be a longer process because there's more elements to look at, but you would still do this structured process to get to the recommendations in the end. So there would be both of, you know, the multiple rounds, the discussion, we would use something similar to that. It would be, at least that is our thinking right now at this moment on the 19th of September. Obviously, there could be changes, you know, somewhere along the way, but that, that is what our thinking is. And I'll pause there again, if anyone would like to add to that, please feel free to.
I could very briefly. The whole process of the standard setting committee that met over the past couple of days isn't included in the law. So it was a, an effort that mirrors what happens in other states and what the department had done previously to set these scores. And it was what was brought forward to the LSAC to get a set of recommendations put forward. So we'll need to repeat this again next year, but if the LSAC feels that there were issues with the standard setting process, then we, and we want to move forward with another broad committee of some kind to set the standards, we'll need to think about how can we arrange it where what comes forward out of the committee is something that the LSAC would, would accept? I mean, that's, that's the ultimate goal is that you, you form a broad stakeholder committee, you get input from superintendents, from teachers, from community members, from education advocates, from psychometricians, and so that you have an informed decision rather than a, a post hoc decision or an ad hoc decision. So that, that is going to be part of what drives whatever process we come up with is working with you, members of the LSAC around what kind of process is going to give you confidence so that when we come to this point, we have a set of recommendations that ultimately you will approve.
Well, I'll say, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that as we look forward in the future, you know, this is, the amount of data that we, we would have next year, you know, the, one of the reasons why, if you look in statute, I think it talks about if there's a, if it's obvious, and I can't remember the exact language, that possibly there may need to be some changes just due to the relativity of the, of the data. So we would have to come back and look at this same process next year if we need to. And I, I think that's, that's great. So I guess the question before LSAC, are, is there anyone that has any recommended changes or do we want to take a motion as is for this?
This, this is not in relation to that, but if I can ask, when, when does KDE get, and Rhonda, I think I heard you say that it was blind data, so the committee didn't see any, any particular school or district's name, but it was a, a blind version of the data. So when does KDE get that data and have it available for that process?
It was very close this year to that September timeframe because remember this was a new assessment, so we had to bring teachers together to look at the definition of novice, apprentice, proficient, distinguished. The items have to get scored, so that happens primarily in July and then some of the data flowed in in August, but we didn't have very long to turn around the data before we got to the standard setting group. You know, we did lots of quality control checks, we're comfortable with the data. I think we handed off the data to the center like the week before to actually put it into, they have a proprietary tool that the center has developed that just helped people to go through the data and enter their rounds of scores to make it a little easier to use. And so we've flowed the actual raw data, that's the performance of schools, to the center so they could populate their tool.
Okay, thank you.
Others? Any other questions or comments?
Chair Fletcher, this is Tom Carpenter, Johnson County. One follow-up question to what you were talking about with the elementary school cut score recommendations and impact. Did you, did the committee only look at one school and how moving the scores of the overall schools for the elementary, middle school, did it only, did you only look at one school when how it would, how it would impact changing from four yellows to the green? I think that was the example you used. Did you only, did you only look at one school and, and see how that would impact?
Ms. Mitchell, correct me wrong, I think we just looked at one school.
Yes, sir, we looked at one school. I don't recall if it was elementary or middle school, but we did look at one school. What we did was we really looked at each of the categories and to see where those indicators fell in each of the categories and then had a discussion from there.
I think the first school that was identified was where the category break was. So they sort of looked at the next school up from where the cut would have been. And then they had some conversation around what level of proficiency that school would have had. And after kind of reading through that data and talking about it, then the person who made the proposal withdrew the proposal.
Yes.
So, and I, again, please others, correct me if that wasn't accurate to your thinking.
I have just one elaboration to offer. This is Laura Pensino from the Center for Assessment that the, the group did discuss one school, but there was a, the display shows multiple schools at a time. So when they're seeing the results from those rounds of ratings, they can see the outcomes for all of the schools that they considered in that process. So it was, they were sort of considering what happens if we move the cut, you know, at a certain point. Well, that would mean this school would fall below it. So they did sort of consider that school, but they could see outcomes for the schools within that range. So I just wanted to offer that one point of clarification.
Thank you, Laura.
Dr. Fletcher, you had mentioned a lot about, you had talked to folks in your region. I mean, we've had a lot of discussion up here. How, how did the school climate survey, did that, was that correlated pretty closely with how the schools performed on the academic measures? We've had a lot of questions up here on that climate survey and how, is that, is that consistent with what the other indicators are or is that school climate skewing some of the data?
The school climate is a very small percentage and I'd have to, let me get my chart here and I can tell you, I, I don't think it would skew it that much.
Right.
But it is, what is the percentage there, Rhonda?
I think it's four, I think it's 4%.
Yes, that's correct.
And it does differentiate across schools. So there are higher performing and lower performing schools with that survey, with just on that indicator. So there is some spread of performance there. But it has a different calculation than in APD.
Yes, it does. The high, the quality of school climate was 4% for each of the areas. So in middle school, it's 4%, elementary school, 4%, high school, 4%. So when you actually average that in with elementary school, state reading and math at 51%, the science association writing is 40%, the English learner progress is five. It, it should not make, it's probably going to make a difference between a school that's on the border if you look at the overall. It shouldn't make a difference as far as a big difference, a 4% difference anyway.
And just one clarifying on the level with the English learners and their progress and improvement, there will be schools that won't have that measure because they don't have the minimum in for that. So then that 5% gets reapportioned proportionally to the other pieces of the system. So it makes the other components they do have count a little bit more. And that's, that's been really a similar rule we've used for many years.
Mike, this is Superintendent Mitchell. I'll also say this, as a participant in going in and looking at the overall scores, I also say this, as a participant in going in and looking at the overall scores, I focused myself in as, as someone who was scoring to really look and look at those weights by level and determine, you know, what are the heaviest weights? And for reading and math to be the heaviest weight, that came, you know, as my number one determining factor. For middle school, of course, the science, social studies and writing were almost equal. So I would look at both of them together. Of course, high school is where you really had to, to stretch your brain to really think through the weights for post-secondary to add that in as well. So, you know, for elementary and middle, it was a little bit easier than it was for high school.
Okay, other comments? Okay, we're at the point where we either need to make a motion to approve these cut scores, or we need to make, make a motion to amend these cut scores.
Superintendent Fletcher, I will say this, just the feedback that I've received just by reaching out and getting input from different folks was, one concern was the difference between the high school versus the elementary and middle versus the bell curve, and just the conversation around that, the same conversations we've been having. And the other one was around just the, the usage of the color yellow for medium and what that represents. And so with the majority of elementary and middle schools falling within the yellow and orange category, that was a concern. I'm just, I just wanted to share that from my folks that I did get input from.
Okay, others?
Superintendent Fletcher, also just wanted to say that I did speak with teachers, principals, as well as directors, and to get their input, just so it wasn't just restricted to other superintendents.
Okay, let me ask a question to the group before there's any other motion made, or if we make a motion. Do we feel more comfortable with changes in the middle and elementary that would make that a little more even with the lower levels? Or do we feel comfortable? Again, I guess the big question shouldn't be, should be, do you want to look at how we rate against each other, or do you want to look more at how, how it relates to the indicators? And maybe that's putting it too simplistic. Any thoughts?
Can you please repeat that, Superintendent Fletcher?
What I'm hearing more often is about the overall with, with elementary and middle. So the philosophy there is, you know, what are people's thoughts about looking at, do we want to look at the cut scores, cut scores as they strongly relate to indicators? Or do we want to look more as it relates to how we compare with each other across the state? In other words, a more bell curve, or a more normal distribution, if you will? Any thoughts on that?
Superintendent Fletcher, I will just say that I value the, the work of the committee, and I value the, the leaders that led this work and their knowledge and expertise through the department, as well as from the folks that were brought in to lead the work. I was very appreciative to get to be a part of it. And I think all the members on the committee did the very best that, that we could all possibly do to, to make the best possible decisions that we could make. So I want to start by saying thank you to those folks. But I also think that from the feedback that I have gotten, for me, I would have to share that. I feel like the consideration of a bell curve would be something that we might consider looking further into. My concerns for that, just as a participant, would be around the indicators and not fully getting to finish that discussion of the upper end of the indicators, is how they relate to the overall cut scores and the summary of that. Just from the feedback that I have gotten from the teachers, principals and directors, administrators that I have spoken with.
Chairman Fletcher, this is Superintendent Russ Tilford. I just want to say I appreciate the work of the committee. There's a tremendous group of educators assembled there. I know y'all put a lot of dedicated time in that, and hearing your comments, as well as the comments from Superintendent Mitchell this morning, gives me confidence that this is a good starting place for us to move forward. I know as we move into next year, we'll have to revisit this as we factor in change, but it is a good starting point. And with that, I move that we accept the cut scores as, as presented today.
Do we have a motion for Mr., Superintendent Tilford to accept these as submitted today? Do we have a second?
This is Kirk Biggerstaff, I'll make the second.
As a motion by Mr., second by Mr. Biggerstaff, Superintendent Biggerstaff, any discussion?
I have one question with regards to, what is the, what's the, I know Dr. Glass spoke, you spoke to the timelines for the federal reporting. What are the timelines or restrictions that we are under in order to complete the process? Or what, what are those specific timelines?
Sure. Rhonda, why don't you come on and talk about the timeline that we have out ahead of us as far as public reporting?
Obviously, once a cuts or something was agreed upon to apply this to the colors, then we would need the opportunity to do that. We'd also need the opportunity to allow people in your district to do some quality control of the data. We always have a quality control day where you see your data in advance. We don't really have a formal endpoint in mind. We have put this tentative timeline together, but that's based on the assumption that things moved forward out of LSAC today. Obviously, if we need to do something different and have different discussions, we would need to push this back. But I think probably Superintendent Virch, what you're asking for is there like a point in time where federally you kind of cross the line into trouble because you haven't hit a mark? There isn't really that kind of federal deadline. Some states report much later than we do. Obviously, you know, we want to move things forward so that people can, you know, put their attention around instruction and, and working with students every day. But you can see what we had put in place tentatively. Right now, we have created a public release schedule that has things going publicly October 18th. And a quality control day was actually tentatively arranged for later this week. Obviously, all of these things can be shifted depending on the outcome today and the conversation today. But there isn't really a federal date that we must, you know, hit this by a particular time in terms of the accountability reporting.
Thank you very much.
Right, and I will want to add, I do want to add one thing, if you don't mind. I think the, where it does get to be problematic is, once we apply the federal rule and we identify CSI, you need to start that process of working with CSI schools. And obviously, the longer you get into the school year, the less sort of time that staff out of Dr. Kelly Foster's area have to work with the district on getting those in place. So I think that's, it's that federal piece, while there's not an X day that the federal government says you must report by, in order to do the support of the CSI. You know, we'd want to move things along quickly to get to that.
Sure, thank you very much. I, I just asked that question in terms of, I think somebody else had mentioned it earlier, we, we do represent specific regions, judicial districts, and, and I typically, my process, I think I shared this before with the Dr. Glass, my process is I, I try to take the regulations as they come to us and send them out to the, the superintendents of the districts that, that, that I represent and get their feedback on. And just by nature of the timeline this time and getting this late Friday, I, I haven't had the opportunity to do that and have a, a great deal of input back from, I mean, a very small handful, but a great deal of input back. So that's, that is my concern. This is something that affects everybody. This is basically us setting the scale by which we're going to report to the community of our performance after a two-year, after battling a worldwide pandemic for the last couple of years. And that seems to me like the, the, both of the overall and the indicator scores are really set subjective to what we felt like in a committee was the best place to put that. So that's, that's where my concern is. And if you look at, for example, elementary school indicator recommended cuts and impact for reading and math, there's 36.9% of, of districts, based on those cut scores for that indicator, in the red and orange, and 26.9 in the green and blue, with the remainder 36.2 in yellow. So, you know, obviously, those indicators come together to make the overall, and that has a huge impact. I don't, I really love where Dr. Glass is trying to take us to, and to be quite honest with you, with more of a, using a universal screener type, type solution, and really measuring growth on the individual student, and we, as we get to a more personalized individual learning process, and measuring growth throughout the year, and reporting how our schools are doing based upon the individual growth of a student throughout a, a year. So I look forward to that day and, and to the day when we can move away from this type of one, one time of year assessment, placing a label on a school, or even for that matter on, on a child, because it's not very reflective of overall performance. So, but thank you for your time.
Dr. Fletcher, and this most probably is going to go to Rhonda. She had just mentioned the federal guidelines on CSI schools. Rhonda, when we look at that, does that tend to low 10% still? So does that mean that schools that are in oranges will be considered CSI?
Let me kind of give you a, a little background on that. CSI is a very straightforward calculation, and it doesn't really require any of this conversation today. With CSI, it's about looking at each set of schools, elementary, middle and high, and sorting for the bottom 5%. And so that is the formula that we have to use for CSI. Then once you know what that cut is, what that performance level is, then you apply it to group performance to identify TSI. So that's a very prescribed mathematical process, and it doesn't really have an impact on these particular cuts. These cuts that are colors for state reporting sort of float out there separately from CSI. Now, Dr. Fletcher did a nice job earlier talking about, there was a lot of conversation to keep the red in the state colors sort of in alignment with that concept of 5% and bottom 5%. But again, in order to do the federal calculation, it is just a straightforward mathematical process of, of really ranking and drawing, drawing a line on the bottom 5%. So it doesn't really require the cuts that you're discussing today. This is more about reporting in the dashboard for the state. But very good question, Mike. Good to see. Appreciate it.
This is David Rowley. I, I have a question. First of all, let me echo what everybody else is saying, is that I appreciate the work from this committee. I, I can't imagine being in there for two days trying to get all this worked out. So Rhonda, when, when, when the committee meets again, or whatever that committee looks like next year, is there a possibility then that, that we would get more of that, of that bell curve distribution? Is that a possibility, or is there just no way of knowing that?
I'd certainly think in conversation, it could come with that kind of outcome. I don't think, you know, really, people were looking at the current profiles of performance and making their decisions.
Right.
Part of their decision might be that they would like to adjust it more, especially that with us being out for a year. I certainly think that is a, a possibility. I don't think it's a, an automatic or a, a given. But, you know, that might be the kind of conversation where LSAC, as we talked about, and you know, Commissioner talked about, we, we had, we know we'll need to do a process. We can work with LSAC on what that process is like. So, you know, there could be some comments moving forward as the process is planned. And again, I'll allow others to, to weigh in as well. But I think it would be open. I think would be the way I'd summarize my answer.
I think, Rhonda, that's a beautiful way to answer it. It would be open. And there were some discussions like that within this committee. So there, there was discussions like that. So again, it was a, it was a really good, actually, I learned, when you walk out of a committee and you learned a few things, especially from the English learner perspective, I learned a lot that day. So again, I was very pleased with that, with that aspect.
So the reason I ask that question, because this is, this is one of my concerns and concern that, that some, some of the folks that, that I have, I've spoken with, principals included, is obviously, you know, we, we want to tell the story of, of where we are. We want to, we want to have an honest assessment of, of where we are and, and what we can do to, to improve. My, my concern is we're, I don't know how many people really appreciate coming out of a pandemic and, and all the other challenges that, that district schools and, and teachers face. And so that's going to, that, that's going to be, that, that's one of my concerns is when the data is released and, and we're having to explain to the media and, and our community and our parents at a time where, you know, choices is all over the social media, you know, and as well as, you know, trying to recruit and retain educators when, when they've worked so hard, you know, all the time, but especially during this pandemic. So I have no problem with, with, you know, our, our current status and where we are, where we want to go. I'm just worried about what the public perception looks like when we're, you know, when there's, there's not opportunity for, for a, a lot of schools to be high, very high. I, I hope that makes sense. And it's just, it's just kind of my thoughts right now.
Any others? Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion made by Superintendent Tilford, second by Superintendent Biggerstaff. Dr. Brewer, if you'll turn it over to a roll call vote. And again, it's to approve the accountability standard-setting committee recommended cut scores as presented.
Kirk Biggerstaff.
Kirk Biggerstaff, yes.
Mike Vortures.
Mike Vortures, yes.
Harry Burchett. Tom Cochran. David Cox.
So I'm, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Superintendent Burchett?
Yes, I, I was, I forgot. I was trying to talk, but my, my mic was muted. So I was, I was asking, I would like to vote and, and clarify my vote with a comment if possible.
That, that's granted.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
For the safety, for the sake of moving this process forward in the timeline today, I, I am going to vote yes. But I would like to, to vote yes with this caveat. I, I would ask the department, Dr. Glass, anyone who has a part of this process, if they could give us more time in the future with this. I, I would like to see this data for, just like with the regulations, at least a week ahead of a discussion or a, a decision on this process. So please consider that in the future. Thank you.
Superintendent Cochran?
Tom Cochran, yes.
David Cox? David Cox? Superintendent Cox, I think you were on mute.
That sounded so good, too. I was, David Cox, yes, I would echo what Superintendent Burchett said also, and, and I'm sitting here and, and thinking through this, and, and quite frankly, for most of us, the people that, the experts in our district are DAX, and, and the people that go to all the meetings and, and spend most of their time with this, as opposed to, to, to what a lot of us superintendents have the opportunity to do. So maybe something along the lines of including those folks in this, just a little bit more, and again, I'm not creative enough to come up with that, but, but I, I agree with what Harry said.
Robbie Fletcher.
Robbie Fletcher, no.
Will Hodges.
Will Hodges, yes.
Sheila Mitchell. Sheila Mitchell, no. David Rowley.
David Rowley, yes, but I, I would also like to add a comment as well, like to echo what, what Harry Burchett said. Also, I'd like to add to that is, is I like to consider myself a, a collaborative leader, and, and the short turnaround here, and, and the, the lack of opportunity to, to get feedback from those superintendents I represent, I would just like to have an opportunity to do that in the future. Thank you.
Kelly Ransdale.
Kelly Ransdale, yes.
Russ Tilford.
Russ Tilford, yes.
And Dr. Brewer, the results?
We had nine yes votes and two no.
Okay, so that being said, that goes to KDE and Dr. Glass, they have been recommended that you use these cut scores, we appreciate the work, and again, I'd like to also take the opportunity to thank Dr. Glass for, for working with us on this, also like to thank Ms. Sims, there was a lot of great conversations that went on, and also her entire staff. So again, that day, if you ever have the opportunity to be a part of one of these standard setting committee, it's a great opportunity to be there, so if you have that opportunity, gentlemen, and ladies, I'd recommend it. All right, any others before we close?
Just a thanks on the part of the department, to the LSAC and the members of the committee, and to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Glass, we appreciate that, and again, folks, we look forward to you at the next meeting we have, I think, coming up September 27th, to have a motion to adjourn.
So move. Mike Vorchers?
Representative Vorchers, I'm sorry, Superintendent Vorchers, second?
David Rowley, I second that motion.
And if none oppose, we stand adjourned.